It's 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, June 26th. I'd like to let the record show that we have Commissioner Science absent. If everyone will please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Very well, would please remain standing for a moment of silence for Commissioner Penya. I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning and thank you all for coming. I guess, first item is approval of claims.
(inaudible).
Motion to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Before we go into our reports, I just want to take a moment to reflect on Commissioner Penya. Commissioner Penya was in his, I think it's 18th year of service as a Commissioner. Prior to that, he was JP in Roma for about 20 years, so he had a long history of service to Starr County. He's going to be missed, as I told several reporters who talked to me, and it's going to be extremely difficult to find someone that can fill his shoes. He was, I guess, very pro Starr County. He loved Starr County, and he was vocal about Starr County. As most of you that knew him know, he certainly did a lot for Prison Two. I think in his term, he did more for Prison Two than had been done in the past history. One of his biggest accomplishments was the cemetery. He worked on that cemetery for a good 10 years, and I'll give you a little history about the cemetery. That was a piece of property that was owned by Texaco. And back then, Texaco or the oil companies would buy land for the mineral, but they wouldn't use the surface. So he found this track, and he started, he made it his mission to see if he could get the surface donated to the county so that he could build a cemetery. And like I said, it took him about 10 years, but he finally was able to do it at the cost of nothing to the county. It was donated to the county, and then he started building the cemetery, something that we needed. We were supposed to have a ribbon cutting beginning of the month, but Mr. Penya was under the weather, and I chose not to do it because that was his thing, and I wanted him to be present. However, you know, we don't know when our day will come, and his day came before we were able to officially cut the ribbon. But, you know, he, I want to give him all the praise for that because he was the one who did it. Again, you know, Prison Two will be well taken care of, and I want to assure the people in Prison Two that whoever I name will be from Prison Two and will have Prison Two in their heart. Hopefully, that will be coming here in the very near future. Again, I thank you all who went to his services and to his family. They're going through some really tough times right now, so my condolences to them. Good times are great healer, and we'll move on. But Commissioner Penya will be missed.
Your Honor, I'm saying here on the claim, I don't see any claims for the precincts here, Mr. Carter. No appeal was put in for the road and bridge.
(inaudible) we were a little bit too fast. There's no, on the claim, there's no payment for, nothing for the precincts, for the commission.
Can you give us an explanation?
Can we go back to the...
Sure, yeah, sure. You want to use the podium, please, Ms. Carter?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, I have a report on the road and bridge fund. Yes, there is a reason why there are no purchase orders on the, on the, on the list this morning for the, for the road and bridge fund. And that reason is that the road and bridge fund doesn't have enough money right now to pay the bills. So let me, let me give you my report.
Mr. Carter, before you go on...
Why don't, wait until...
Yeah, why don't we wait for your report?
Wait until you get your report.
Yeah, do you have it as an agenda item or on your report, or...
Well, I prepared the information. It's up to you, if you will be...
But, but do you have it later on as an agenda item, or is it a report from you, or...
It's not on the agenda this morning. I have, I have the information prepared. I anticipated the question, so...
But the reason why they were not paid, you will give it in your report, right? In your report?
Well, I'll explain the, my report is to explain why, so...
Okay, but, but do you have an agenda item?
No, sir, I do not.
Just a report?
Yes.
Okay, when we get to your report, then you can give us that, okay? Okay, before we go with our reports, we'll, is there anyone from outside the county that would like to come before the court at this time?
(inaudible).
Yeah, we can. Let's wait for Commissioner Penya. I mean, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hudson. I'm sorry?
Can we say our calls now?
Yeah, yeah, why don't you come before, use the podium, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to take this time and talk about Operation Lone Star this year. My name is Monica Espinoza. I'm with the Texas Department of State Health Services, and I'll be the incident commander this year, and I'll let our public information officer actually talk about our services that we're offering. I have a little packet here for you guys.
Okay.
We can have visibility of what.
Thank you.
Yes, Honorable Judge and Honorable Commissioners, my name is Leonel Vella. I am also with the Department of State Health Services. I will be the public information officer for the event here in Starr County. We wanted to give you official notice because part of the way that we feel is that the county, the Commissioners' Court is an extension of what we do, especially in this particular event. We are here to provide services to the people of this community, and we would also, in part, like to ask for your help in this event, both in the idea of spreading the word to the population for the entire county, and whenever possible, to see if you might be able to provide services to people that don't have transportation, to be able to bring them to the site and to take them back to where they reside. We are going to be providing medical, diabetic screenings, blood pressure, hearing and vision screenings, and preventive dental for children. And we are, feel very honored to be representing you in part because, again, we feel that these services are important for the community, especially when there is limited income. Our focus is preventive services, so the faster we find a problem and the faster we can get them to help, the better off the entire community is going to be, you know, because of the same kind of information that we have, which is limited funds that you all have as well to provide to the community. So we would ask you to join us in this effort to get people to these services, and we can ensure that if there are any problems that are there medically or vision and hearing, we can get the help to the people that need it.
The, the services will be at Fort Ringo at the Magnet Elementary?
Yes, it is, and it will be from July the 24th through the 27th. It's 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 to 2:00 on Friday because that's when we close the operation. We will have actual doctors there. Most of them are from the Health Science Center in San Antonio. They are part of the Texas Medical Command, and very competent people because they are the ones who train our doctors, you know, for, for this, for this area. So it, it is a very high quality of medical staff that we will be having available, and we would like for people to take advantage of that.
Sure. If I remember correctly, last year, we did not have any dentists. Are you going to have dentists this year?
We will have dental, but for preventive services for school-aged children. Yes, yes, we will have that part, yes. We will be working to, maybe in the future, see if we might be able to get some dental for adults over here, but we were not able to secure enough help during this year for this site. Any, any questions that I could answer? Then we, we thank, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming back. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay, who's, from out of town, I believe?
Air Eha.
Okay, you want to use the podium, identify yourself, and if you know your agenda item number.
Uh, I don't.
Okay, this is related to what?
This is the voluntary benefit for the air ambulance service.
Oh, okay. Number seven? Okay, if it be all right with the court, I'll, we move to item seven. And this is an action item to approve membership program for the air, air med care countywide coverage. Go ahead.
Okay, we were here a couple weeks ago, and we were wanting to present the court with the possibility and for you all to consider offering the voluntary benefit of the membership program. This one here is the standard membership that was offered at one point, and it is for $5 a month to the employees. This membership would cover any costs that are not paid by your insurance carrier in the event that a person needs to be transported to the nearest hospital or the nearest level of care because someone's life depends on it. Many times, we don't have the level of care either here in Starr County or in the valley, so many times, we need to transport from Starr County to the McAllen area, and a lot of times, if we don't have that level of care in the McAllen area, we transport to San Antonio, Houston, Galveston, anywhere else where they have that specialized care. And so we're here for the approval today and see if, would you all consider...
You, you mentioned something that I don't think had been mentioned before. So this is a, an addendum, I guess, to our current health coverage? Whatever our health insurance doesn't pay, then this is what we're buying?
Basically, yes. I mean, the way this program works in general for anybody that were to sign up, if a person has insurance, then we're going to bill their insurance because that's how we survive in the business. It is a costly service, but it's a life-saving service, and it's very necessary, especially in the rural community. And so, so that is the way we stay in business, is we do bill your insurance carrier. However, our membership program has always stated that in the event that your insurance company pays a certain amount, then, you know, our membership program picks up the rest.
Sure, sure, Honorable, I bet you brought it up. How much does our insurance? The insurance that we currently have, what does it cover based on what, you know, we're talking about ambulance, so how much is it that we cover?
UnitedHealth covers up to 80 percent for air ambulance.
80 percent of, if it's either in the helicopter or in the...
Ambulance also 80 percent.
80 percent. So that $5 will cover the difference of the 20 percent that we're lacking?
I would imagine. Is that...
Correct, correct.
See, the, the question that I have is, so only, only are employees that have insurance can buy this?
Well, actually, it should be offered to everybody. However, I was told by Armandina that some of your, some of your employees don't have coverage at all.
Right.
And because the industry, the air ambulance industry, the dynamics of it has changed. A lot of the insurance companies aren't paying the full amount, and so there have been a few changes to some of our contracts. And that is something that we, typically, when we do offer to groups, usually, the majority of the people have insurance.
We're talking about taking care of ourselves, but who's going to take care of the general public, take us again, you know?
No. I mean, if a person's life depends on it, whether they're members or not, I mean, our primary mission and focus is to save lives. So whether a person's a member or not, if we're called on, they're going to make that transport. But if a person is insured, then we are going to bill their insurance company, and whatever their insurance company does pay, then that should be sufficient payment. And in your case, for the employees that are covered, it's 80 percent. Now, at this point, because we haven't discussed the, the fact that you all have a sizable amount of employees that don't, aren't covered, you know, that is something that I, honestly, I hadn't known, and so I, I need to get, I guess, something in writing with our company that's going to say, you know, this is something that should be offered to all of the employees, whether they're insured or not, and, and if not, maybe this is something to consider.
Let me, let me interrupt you. You're saying that not all the employees have coverage? We are providing health insurance for every employee that's full-time employee. Why is it not covered?
The reason some of our employees, they have a, a match part, I don't know the amount, but it's like 20 bucks or...
Yeah, we have a total of 600 employees. On those, only 400 have insurance. A lot of our part-time employees don't get the insurance.
Well, let me, that, that, remember, you have to have at least work for 32 hours a month, so a part-time worker does not work, how can he be insured?
You know. Only if you work more, if you're a part-time, a lot of times, you're not eligible.
So anybody that doesn't work 32 hours does not have insurance?
Probably not.
Not, not from us.
At least from somebody else.
Yeah, not from us.
Okay.
They might have Obamacare or something like that.
Right, yes.
To the wife or the...
Yeah. Yeah, see, and this is where I'm confused, because the last time you, you reported, I remember specifically asking, this would be an option that all our employees would have, whoever wants to buy it or whoever doesn't, and you said yes.
Correct.
Now, it doesn't seem that it's that way. It's only those that have insurance.
Well, no, I, see, I wasn't aware that, okay, there was that many employees, but that, my point is that that shouldn't matter whether they're insured or not. This is something that should be offered to all the employees, and that is what I want to secure and, and clarify with my company.
Yeah, and we do want, we do want for our employees to have all the benefits that we can afford them. However, the other thing that scares me is if you all are going to build the insurance company, and, and they cover, let's say, let's say $1,000 is what they cover, and 80 percent of that, they, they would pay $800, and your bill now is another $500. Where are those 300 extra coming from? From the employee, the insurance?
No, if they're members, then we eat up that cost. It's not billed to anybody. See, the way it works is that all of the employees that do sign up, they're in our database. So if a person is transported, and we match them up with their address, date of birth, and their name, then they're not going to have to pay that bill.
You know what, what, I don't know what the Commissioner...
But I'm saying only, so actually, if a person, let's say, one of the part-time employees buys your program, so you, he pays the $5, and he only gets covered 20 percent. Right?
Well, no, that's, no, he should be covered at 100 percent. In other words, if he doesn't have insurance, if he doesn't have insurance, our, our membership is, that if a person's a member, whether they have the insurance or not, they're...
But let's say, let's, give me, let's go back. They say, I'm a part-time, and I buy your insurance. I get picked up by, by your net air ambulance or whatever. I have insurance, your insurance company is going to pay the, the total bill of, let's say, $1,000 for me, because I don't have, I don't have the, the insurance coverage with our health insurance. They're going to pay the $1,000. Or you're going to just charge 200?
Well, we're not going to, if they're members, then they shouldn't get a bill at all.
Well, yes, but I want to say this, what I'm saying is, you will get paid anyway, your full amount of, they don't get a bill because you get paid.
We'll get paid 80 percent of our bill. If they're members.
Why don't, you know, this is just a suggestion. We table this item, have a workshop, and, and get his numbers as to how it's going to affect us.
Okay.
You know, if, if only certain employees come in, if all of them sign up, you know, what's the billing going to be to our health insurance? What's that going to do to, to our total bottom line for health insurance? You know, this question's our...
Yes.
It's, it's about money.
Correct.
Certainly, we want to do what's right for our employees, and we want to give them everything possible.
Right.
But we only have so many dollars.
Right, I understand.
So that's what, what I'm concerned about.
Well, I think that would be a great idea, so I would love to do that, so...
Yeah, because, you know, so we don't take up an hour, you know?
Yes, exactly.
We can have a workshop, set it up with Armandina, and...
Okay.
Armandina, whenever the Commissioners are available, and, and then you can answer all our questions, but in the meantime...
Perfect, yes.
Start studying what impact that's going to have on our insurance, on our employees, and how much out-of-pocket our employees are going to be having.
Okay, very well. We will do that, okay? Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No action. Well, table, is there, motion to table?
I'm moving to table.
The second, by Commissioner Hudson. Honorable fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? If not, we'll go on with our reports. First, the gas department.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My report is in your package. I'd just like to add that we've already started to, this morning, we started to cross the intersection at New Citizen State Bank, and as soon as I'm through here, I'd like permission to leave because I do need to be there. All the pipeline has been ordered and is here to get us down to Suntex Road and Reyes Street, which is the end of our service line. Hopefully, once we get past this rain, maybe another week or so, we can start on that. But what's immediate right now is the Citizen State Bank. They're getting ready to construct the front, so we need to get that. So we're starting it today.
What size of line are you running?
Two-inch poly, the new, the new, the new class of poly that the state is requiring. I'd also like to point out that the Railroad Commission audits us from August to July mostly all, every year, and we've been running under 10 percent. They allow 10 percent of volume loss. We've been running way below that. We're almost averaging 45 percent, so we're doing real good. And we should do better with that new line going to Suntex because that's our problem line. We should be able to get that down to zero, I hope. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge.
Transfer station?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. You have my financial report in your package. The only thing I have to add on is that Thursday, we started the, they started working on this lab for the tire scrap building, and we already got approved by TTQ and, and the COG that is giving us the, the money to build. And they should be done and finished with everything before, before August 1st. It should be up and running.
By August 1st?
The 1st. They started the concrete lab, and they're, they're having a little trouble because of the caliche ground there, it's too hard, but they already got a machine trying to help them a little bit, make it easier for them.
How much is that project going to cost?
One is completely done with electricity, and everything should be running around, we also got approved for a pressure washer with hot water and, and cold water pressure washer. Everything should be running around 32, 32, 33. More or less.
Because I was approached by the, apparently, the guy that will build the, this building, asking for an advance, I said, well, it should be brought up to the Commissioners' Court, or did you squirt away that with the authority that we have?
Yes, I keep talking to Rain and myself, I think it was on Wednesday or Thursday, and we clarified everything with him, how this works, because, I mean, the county has to pay for it, and we get reimbursed by, by the state. So we clear it out with him and everything, and everything's cleared out. Yeah, him and the concrete guy are already working together in order to, for the metal break-in from the concrete and all that.
Does that include the extra monies that you were able to acquire last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me just, and I really don't know all the details, but there was some money left over at the COG by some of the other entities that was not used, were not used, so Ms. Gara and Ms. Gonzalez worked up a request for things that we still needed, and I think they were very, very fortunate, we got, I think, all of it.
We got all of it.
All the money that was left, Laredo wanted some, but we were able to, to beat them out, so that's the reason we got the pressure washer.
What else can we apply for there, the money's on the COG?
For, I don't know. What else can we apply for, other...
It depends on the type of...
They're focusing more than anything on recycling and environmental protection because it had to be approved by TTQ, so they kind of focused into that direction. I mean, I'm pretty sure there's other stuff we can apply for, but they're mainly focusing on that.
We could buy, buy annual grants, and for this one, it was specifically for recycling purposes, and that's why we applied for that much, much-needed building that we needed to house the tire cutters since we weren't allowed to house them at the transfer station. And the first round that we applied for, it was $25,000. And then that second round, the, actually, the leftover monies were $17,000 plus, and we were able to bring it back to Starr County.
So actually, on that program, we only can apply for, for environmental use?
Well, I mean, the COG, they bring different projects to the table, and this time, it was for that. Just for transfer stations, landfills.
But if you have some...
But they have others, they have...
If you have some needs, we can, we can call the COG and ask them...
It's like Sheriff's Office. I think sometimes they get for communications and stuff like that. They have different, and we were able to tap into this one.
You know, really, going back to, like I said, I bought the duster at, at the, at the Army Sherplein, and I got it ready, but I need a, a little boy and a tractor trailer to, to pull it, so it can be ready whenever something is needed. I don't have to be looking for a, for a, for a guy to haul it for you. Well, that's why I was asking, but I mean, probably next go running, maybe a year or so.
Maybe under emergency management?
Yeah, I was going to ask, Monty, do you know of any funding that might be available for... for--
I am meeting right now with most of the contractors from Eden.
Okay. Under emergency management.
Yeah, but how long would it take? Well, I'm going to go look at, you know, a, a low boy at this time, see if I can buy one, you know?
Can you check and let me know if there's any money's available or when the next round would be? And I'll let you know, Commissioner. Okay?
We're having a meeting on the twenty-nine, and we'll check over here, I'll go, Commissioner up and give you the next one. If you have any other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item is the Industrial Foundation. Rose, I thought I saw you.
Good morning, Your Honor Commissioners. This morning, we wanted to give you a quick update on some of the things that we've been working on, and we appreciate the invitation to join you. I know that one of the most pressing things that our job is tied to, obviously, is job creation, but there's always a conversation about unemployment rate and if jobs are coming to this area and, and when, and we're happy to report that we're at the tail end of working about a hundred million dollars' worth of industrial and commercial development, and we're looking real closely to hoping that this wraps up in, in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be coming back to you on Project Star Prosper, that you've taken some action already, and hopefully here in, in the next few days or within the next week, we're able to, to finish off the items that we're working on that project. We did want to tell you, though, that something really significant happened between the month of April and May, and it's a cyclical thing, but, but it's still important to point out. Our unemployment went down two-point-one percent, so we are currently in the month of May at eleven-point-eight percent, which is one of the lowest amounts that we've had in, in quite some time. We started the year at about fifteen-point-eight in January, and I think we spoke about there being a change in the, in the tabulation that TWC has been working on. But despite that change that increased our unemployment a couple of percent automatically because of the change of, of, of the formula, we're down to eleven-point-eight. I mean, we're obviously not where we want to be, but the idea of going down four percent in a matter of five months i- is a significant thing, and we do want to thank you for the support you allow us and, and, and the contribution that you make in your time and dollars to, to help us move some of these, some of these projects forward. We do want to mention to you, we were expecting to have an Industrial Foundation meeting tomorrow, but we got caught in a little situation where quorum became an issue, so we'll be moving this meeting. Right now, it's, we're looking at next Thursday, after the, the holiday. We're going to make calls again today and ensure that we have quorum, and if that becomes an issue, then we will move it down a day or we'll move it down to, to the following week. Our hope is to be able to, to bring all of you, if you can join us that day, we'll know hopefully by the end of the day when we're able to do it, and if you're not, we'll be happy to visit with each of you individually to go ahead and give you an update more specifically on some of the things that we're working on. One other issue we wanted to bring out to you today is, last week, we spent the week in DC as part of a RGV to DC coalition with the Rio Grande Valley Partnership. We addressed a lot of issues, we were talking about funding and what this new budget means, and it's funny, you were talking about the CDBG grant, because depending who you talk to in DC, a lot of people are talking about the fact that that grant may not be available come next year at all. A lot of these agencies are looking at some very severe cuts. We've got a lot of people working to help that not happen, but at this point, there is some signal that the issues and the points of negotiation will have a direct impact on us, because they're items that are being seen as possible ways to, to remove some deficit in funding that they're seeing, but we're hoping that that does not happen. One of the most important things we're trying to do is, we know that border security continues to be an area that is being highly funded, both at the state and federal level, and we're trying to find ways to potentially use some of those dollars to engage in job creation and in investment in this community, rather than it just be focused on potentially building walls or, or bringing more law enforcement from the outside. So those are narratives that we're trying to change, so that potentially some of those dollars where we know that they've got large pots are being used for different things. Lastly, there's a couple of specific items that we were asked about. We were asked about infrastructure money, and we were asked about potentially doing something to try and deal with animal control. We visited with the Congressman, and we visited with multiple agencies about trying to find a way, and they're currently identifying areas where some of that funding can come through to be able to serve the county. We have a follow-up conversation set with them by the end of the week, so we should be able to give you some more news by that time. Any questions? Gee, by Friday, they're going to have an answer for us. We, we, we called it animal control, but that's exactly what I was talking about. We're trying to find a way to do a regional--
Well, back to that, maybe between La Ruya, Riurande, the counties, Scuadre, and Roma, we could do something like a, like a regional dog pound or animal control pound. But we got problems, you know, everybody paid proportionally to the population, or the average, sure?
Yeah, we, certainly, we, we could do that, we can look into that. Or whoever wants to participate, you know? I know the city of Riurande already has theirs.
Who?
The city of Riurande.
Yeah, that, that was--
They got here, but they don't take from anybody, they just take from the city.
Yeah, they're, they're actually shifting them to, um, um, there's a Sullivan, there's a--
Is there, is there some place--
A shelter in Sullivan, um, Yaki's, I think.
Take them there?
They, they do, I mean, I wouldn't encourage them to have, you know, hundreds of dogs--
How much? Three hundred? Well, I'll tell you something, Commissioner, getting funding from out there, it's just like next to, you can dream on it all year, two, three years from now, it ain't going to happen.
But we're trying, we're, we're trying to see--
I have an idea of everyone participating and maybe come up with something.
But, you know, he came up with a concept of potentially that being a way to subsidize some of the funding, where everybody contributed a little. I know Rio Grande City does have one, I don't know necessarily that they're using it.
We got money, the Congressmen should do something about it, get some monies out here, they, they dedicate monies to somewhere else.
Now you're dreaming that the Congress--
No, that's, but I'm telling you the truth of the matter, but we can dream on it, because it's not going to happen, you know?
Understood, but we will try and find a way to, to help if we can with some of those dollars, but ideally, this could be an opportunity for all the communities to do something similar that we've, they've done in the past to, to fund some of these projects, so we're going to continue to look at that project and see how we can help.
It doesn't matter where it's built, it's just--
Right.
I was going to say, but you know, you see there, out there taking picture with money given to the law enforcement out there, you know, they can get overtime and all this kind of stuff. When we are in dire need of something like that, they don't even turn, turn away to look for, to build something like that.
We're having those discussions, and we hope to have another answer, too. We will not, the last thing we wanted to share with you is, just recently, we, we got some additional dollars to do some marketing collateral, we're doing some on our website, we're doing some on social media, but we've been doing some on print, and we just wanted to give you an idea of, of some of the things that we do to be able to help recruit new businesses. In this, you'll see some of the updates on educational attainment, on, uh, sales and, uh, sales tax. Interestingly enough, one of the last things we'll mention to you is, we have begun the conversation about, there is apparently a mechanism that was put in place where counties could start collecting sales tax in areas that are not within a municipality, and so we're starting to explore what we need to do in order to get that process done, but it's been done in, in other areas, and we reached out to some friends that were involved in it, and we're hoping to get more information real soon to see potentially this is something that we can do here as well.
Yeah, I looked into that, I looked into that a, a few years ago, Rose, and what I was told was that the county could not, or the county as a whole could not have more than a certain percent sales tax.
Correct.
And if the cities already had it at the max, then we couldn't do anything.
In, in the areas that they have it, but if there's areas that we were told that the jurisdiction is not there and sales tax is not being collected, then the possibility exists that you can do the full sales tax there and unincorporated areas.
Or I was told the cities--
Can--
Could lower theirs a little bit, so we could go in with a penny or so.
We don't necessarily think that that'll be a, a, a popular idea, but we're learning, trying to learn a little bit more about what it entails, and if, it was an actual law that was passed, and one of our good friends that does economic development in the valley helped in that process, so once we learn a little bit more, we'll share that with you as well.
Yeah, follow, follow through with that one--
Absolutely.
And the hotel tax.
Yes, of course. Any other questions? We actually did this in-house, we try and save as much money as we can, so we developed it in our house or in our office. Nilda's actually our, our designer and, and-- Oh, the actual print, this print, we actually have to take it to McAllen to get printed. We tried to get it printed here, we visited with every print shop, and they weren't able to do it. The one person that could was going to send it to McAllen to, to get it done, so we have a contact in--
Foxsa?
Foxsa, USA. They do print at a very affordable rate for us, and so we're able to get this done.
How much?
They charged us ninety-- We, we got two hundred of these for a hundred dollars. Ninety-nine dollars.
Fifty cents.
Fifty, yeah.
How much?
Fifty cents. And we needed it right away, so they printed it to us within forty-eight hours. We sent it to them, I think on a Wednesday, and we picked it up Friday morning.
I meant to get with you, Ms. Garra.
Okay, absolutely, let us know. All right, anything else?
Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Treasure, Mr. Pena?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
We have, our reports are, are ready, should be in front of you, and I'm going to go over the summary that Mr. Pena has prepared for you. As of May thirty-first, the general fund had a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars less than the same time last year. The road and bridge fund was at fifty-two thousand dollars less than the same time last year. The total amount of funds in all bank accounts was eleven-point-one million dollars, or five-hundred-ninety-six thousand less than the same time last year. We're working with a new auditor on a solution to the bank, to, to general ledger reconciliations, issues dating back to January twenty-fifteen. This is very serious matter, and we need to work together to resolve this as soon as possible. We hope to resolve this matter soon, now that the new auditor's office is working with all financial offices. We have now reconciled the tax office general fund bank account to a general ledger, and it has a large amount of cash that was already missing before Mrs. Salinas took office. This missing cash may be distribution errors by past tax collectors or something more sinister, but at any rate, this amount will not be charged to the general--
What's that?
Will need to be charged to the general fund account.
Can you go back from that?
What are you reading?
I mean--
What's the question?
Yeah, something about the general fund that, that Mrs. Salinas, I heard something on, and the private, they collect--
You see, the, the tax office has a general fund. And that general fund, but they call it general fund, they gave it that name, I didn't assign that name, but that's the name that's given to the account that she collects.
The general fund that you have?
No, that she has, as an agency fund. What she does is she collects money through the cash register, and she deposits it, and then as an agent of the county, deposits the money to our general fund of the county. So she's basically collecting taxes and then disbursing those funds, distributing those funds to the proper entities and the proper account. I was here last year, and I told you that that office did not have a ledger and, and that they had notebooks, and I was told that they were working on it and to stay away. We finally were able to get the books, and after we completed the books with the new tax collector, there is a substantial amount of, of fund equity deficit, and that's going to come out of the general fund, because it's the only place it can come out of.
When you're saying that there's a, a deficit, that the general fund owes the tax office?
No. The tax office collects a hundred dollars--
I know, I know.
And then it turns over a hundred dollars.
Right.
Well, the problem is that the money that she collects in May, there's not enough money to give out the money that she collected in May, because there's a deficit at the beginning of the fund balance.
Well, we knew that because of the lack of funding that was missing, we know that.
But it's missing in her purse, in her bank account.
Well, of course, it, it went out of there, that's where, that's where the problem we had, I mean, that's what these people got indicted for, because somebody took the money there, from there.
But now that money has to be replenished to that fund, because she's the new tax collector--
Yeah, but why, why does the general fund have to, I mean, to give it to her, because we already, it's already been taken care of, we knew that it's missing, the county has observed that, that, that loss because of people taking the money, so why, why are we going to pay her back?
Because she's just an independent agent, if you will, for, as a tax collector, she just collects and hands over. When she's--
Let me tell you something--
Commissioner Garza, right, no matter who the, no matter who the tax collector is, it can be her or anybody else, but they will continue to show that they're short because of that problem.
But it need to come, she's going to have to give less money to the general fund, so that she can balance, can go to zero, because it's supposed to be in and out equal zero, in and out equal zero.
She doesn't have to go to zero.
Well, she's at a negative.
This program will continue to be, who's going to, who's going to put that money back? Nobody?
Yeah, and, and the thing is, we don't know what that number is. Until the investigation is completed, and they indict people, and they go to trial, and they say, this is how much money is missing, then that's the negative, that she will have to, well, she'll report, and, and again, it's not Mrs. Salinas' responsibility to come up with that money, she wasn't here, but that is how much can be either charged off or something to that account, so they can balance.
It's just like a loss.
It's what it is.
It's what a loss, I mean, I mean, we don't need to, you know, we know that money's missing. We've known that for a while, and we can just forget about it, anything happening, because it's not going to happen. It's not going to come back, we're not going to recover, all we need to do is write it off, because you're not going to collect one penny out of that.
I agree.
So we know, and like I said, all we have to do is take as a loss and come down to zero.
I agree.
Because we already observed that deficit, that's why we went to, that deficit to three-thousand, two, three million, three, four years ago because of that. So now we have to do, take it as a loss, and if something comes in, which is, like I dream on it, because you're not going to get a one penny out of it, just forget about it, take it as a loss, whatever it was for the county, but that's, that's the, that's what it going to be.
Commissioner Garza, you have it all very well figured out, that's exactly what we need to do, write off the loss, and, and--
Write it off.
My answer to that, if I may, it's scientific, the amount of money that is missing is scientific. The who took the money or where the money went, that's somebody else's, because there is no general ledgers, there are no books.
Well, I was saying exactly what the Commissioner said, Mr. Pena, you know, that, that--
What he's saying is that it needs to be replenished by the general fund, because you have to--
That's not what he said.
And the loss is what it is.
That's not what he said.
No. How can you, they get this here to replace it, it's, it's a loss.
It's gone.
You can do the paperwork, just give it to her and then turn it back, and that's it. But what is it, you took paperwork, take, take the loss and put it to zero, and if something comes in, well, you, you reimburse the county for the loss.
And that is a decision that the court will make.
I agree.
Not the treasure. The court will make--
Is that going to happen, so there's nothing, you know, to worry about it, because it's gone, it's gone.
I agree, Commissioner.
The next item is the amount of loans of general and enterprise funds was four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, being a hundred-and-sixteen-thousand less than at the same time last year. We do not have any line of credit available to the county now, and cash is going to run out. The balance of the county annex building bond was over one-point-five million, being just under half a million dollars less than at the same time last year. The county's deposits were well collateralized by the bank at twenty-three percent above our contract terms. This is only a summary of the report, and the full monthly treasurer's report is heretofore filed with the county clerk. That's all.
Any questions? Any questions?
You have a number this?
Yes.
Do we get straight out about the deficit, four hundred thousand, whatever it is?
I, I wholeheartedly agree with you that the loss has to be recognized. Trying to think that this money's gonna come back is dreaming. Commissioner, you're a hundred percent correct. I'm so glad that you understand it completely.
No, of course. It's just simple mathematics.
It is, simple mathematics.
It's not coming, it's gone. Someone...
All right.
Connect.
Sheriff's Department?
Commissioner's Judge, good morning.
Good morning.
The total revenue for the month of June, for the month of May, was a hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars.
How much?
Hundred and forty-four thousand.
Are you at five hundred and forty-four?
A hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Perfect. Judge, is the, the budget that you, that you estimated that was coming in for the jail, is it coming in along pretty well?
I, I think we're gonna be right on target. Uh, I'm, I've started on the budget already, trying to work on the budget. But I, I believe that, that we're coming in on target. Uh, the gas department is gonna be in the black, and the bridge is going to be in the black. And the jail, I think it's gonna be right there. I mean, the, the jail. Any questions? It, it did go up from last month, so that's a good sign. Our federal prisoner went down a bit, but...
The average that we've, uh, were holding is about eighty-three.
I'm sorry?
Eighty-three is the average that we're holding.
Last month, I think we had ninety-one, so...
Last, last month was ninety-one.
When was the last time there was an increase in the federal prison?
The last time?
In what?
Well, from last month to this month, there was an increase.
An increase of what they paid, what they paid?
You, you know, that's, that's a good, good point you bring up, Commissioner. The, the sheriff, uh, was telling me last week that he is going to start negotiating with them. I think right now they're getting, we're getting, uh...
Fifty-two?
Fifty-two, and he wanted to take it up to sixty-three or sixty-four.
The average is sixty-eight that they're paying, and we're trying to see if we can maybe come up to at least sixty-five.
Yeah, that's what he did.
I don't think your number will go better than that.
Yes. We did go up from, I think it was thirty, thirty, we were getting paid to fifty-two. And now from fifty-two, we're hoping to jump up to sixty-five.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Elections? Federal estate programs?
The report is before you. Can you give you a couple of minutes for you to review it? For the Los Morenos project, I've been speaking with Lori. We'll be, we will be having the condemnation hearings in August and September for the Los Morenos drainage project.
What, when will the condemnation hearing be?
Uh, we're gonna be having, in August and September. We'll be having those hearings.
How long will those take?
Uh, Lori really didn't know exactly how long. It depends on the commissioners. I guess they have to select commissioners, uh, for them to make the decision.
The condemnation, uh, are efficient, when they're not efficient?
There are, uh, both. The, the whole Los Morenos drainage.
Can we go ahead and proceed with that project and, and just put the money in the registry of the court?
Once we get all of that, yes, we will be able to.
Before the condemnation?
No, they, they have to be filed already. Once we get those paperwork, then we can start, we can give the service.
But we don't have to wait for the courts?
No, no. Once they're already filed, we can start with the process. Any other questions?
No questions.
Another question. What is that, is it yours? What is that money coming in if it just, it, it's not?
Uh, probably by July or August. They're still, they're still working on, because it's made from scratch, so...
That's the one that I'm applying for, right?
That is correct, and we won't hear anything.
I have to say that, you know, I need, that's my turn to apply for that.
No, this, this one is already coming in.
If you look at the, yeah, that's not mine.
No, this one is the one that was applied two years ago, so it's barely been made.
I had to tie up sixty thousand for that one.
And on yours? And on yours, Commissioner Garcia, we applied in March. We won't hear anything until August.
In August?
That is correct.
The next one will be, the next one will be...
Let me ask you, on that housing program, that you have to rebuild those new houses?
Yes.
Anybody can qualify?
The property has to be under their name, of course, and all te..., all taxes have to be up to date.
Any county employee can apply for it?
We can look into that, but I'm not sure. Um, I can look at the policies and, and see the status on that. Yeah, and we just applied for that, we just applied for more funding, so hopefully by September, we won't hear anything on that.
Okay, because I, I got a program I was to apply for, but you said county employee, but I understood they couldn't.
I can look at the policies.
What is, what is, what is the amount of funding coming in?
We won't hear anything until September, since we just applied. The deadline was in March. I'm sorry, the deadline was June the first. So, once they review all the paperwork, they'll go advise us.
Maybe those funds will wanna be cut off, maybe?
I know CDBG, and those are the applies that we, that's a grant that we did apply for back in February. And again, we won't hear anything on that one till September the fifteenth, or, I'm sorry, August.
But, but that would be for the following...
For the following year.
The current one is, is already set.
Correct.
It's a two years.
That is correct.
CDBG is?
The Texas CDBG, and we go through the cog out of Laredo. Correct. And we did get a note on that as well, an email on that. Any other questions?
And we might have deeper cuts if we don't get the audit out.
Any other questions?
You can just forget about it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Didn't we know because of that applicant that I've got?
Okay, moving on with the, uh, agenda, uh, under item five, uh, to approve the new vendors list. I believe we have that before.
So, then we approve the vendor list, but I think Mr. Carter will, this is a lack of sense to explain on the, on the page, no?
Okay, yeah, you wanna explain that, Mr. Carter, now, now that this is your item?
On the page that, that were not paid?
You're, you're already giving the report, is, you're already giving the report?
He gave it last month. But we, we can hear him here, when, under my report either.
Yeah.
Judge and Commissioners, um, let me give you a, uh, let me give you a report on the road and bridge fund. The actual revenue year-to-date in the road and bridge fund is five million and three thousand. The projected revenue from July first through September thirtieth is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, giving total projected revenue of five million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand. The actual expenditures year-to-date, four thousand, uh, four million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, and the remaining budgeted available is one million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, giving total projected expenditures of five million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. Therefore, there is a projected budget deficit of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in the road and bridge fund for, for this year.
Now, how much is that number again, two hundred or what?
Two sixty-nine.
As of right now, Mr. Carter, as of right now?
Yes. The, the estimated, the projected, the, the variable in there, the unknown variable in that is the projected revenue from now, from now through September thirtieth. After studying historical data and, uh, looking at trends from, from prior years, I came up with an estimate of four hundred and fifty thousand. I feel that's a conservative estimate, estimate. Hopefully, it would be a little higher than that. Uh, so therefore, the deficit would be less, um, but ultimately, it, there is gonna be a deficit. We're, we're not, my estimate's not two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars off.
What, uh, what project, or where can you tell me, where is that deficit? Why, why, where, which part is gonna create that deficit? Because of what? No taxes coming in, or, or what's, what seems to be on your, on your calculations?
Well, the, the big picture...
If we stay within budget, all of us, how come there's not enough money to pay? If we stay within budget?
If you stay within the budget?
If we stay within the budget.
Well, the spending is within the budget, yes, it is.
The income is not?
That's right. The income is down this year.
Where's the shortfall? Where is the shortfall that you're expecting? What, what departments or what, which revenues are not coming in?
Well, it's tax collections for the road and bridge fund.
They're not, we're not a...
Let, let me, let me shed some light on that. And we knew all the time that we're gonna be short. In fact, from day one, at the state of the county, I announced that we were gonna be short anywhere from half a million to seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, at the end of the year. The reason for that, and I'm talking about the total, the, the total upsum. The reason for that is, we knew on the, uh, amusement machines, we're gonna be short about half a million dollars. Then the issue came up with Duke Energy, that we were short changed seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, all that had been budgeted in, that puts us in the red about one point two million dollars. Now, in there, we had built some reserves, and we had some fund balance building up and so forth. So, uh, hopefully, it won't be anywhere around one point two million, it'd be less than that, but we are gonna be short. Now, why is general, or I'm sorry, road and bridge short while general at the point it's not? And, and we've gone through this before. When the formulas were made for allocating how much money goes to general, how much goes to road and bridge, the law allows for us to transfer money from general to road and bridge. However, it does not allow to transfer from road and bridge to general. So, before my administration, uh, general was real heavy, road and bridge was very lean, 'cause at any time they needed money, they could move. Now, since then, uh, we have been trying, the court has been trying, to make that to where road and bridge is road and bridge and general is general. However, due to the fact that we have a law that says if you change anything over eight percent, then it throws it into a possible rollback election. So, we've been incrementing the gen, the road and bridge slightly, and it's really not enough to make the difference. We still have to move from general to road and bridge. So, and, and Mr. Carter, you know, when, when that email that you sent me, and we talked, I think, you know, I said, well, look for funds and wherever the bridge, the gas, wherever we have some funds, move them to, uh, road and bridge so that we don't have to go out and borrow at this point. We will have to. We will have to, and I want the public to know that. We will have to, because there's no way that we can come up with the shortages that we have. But I don't wanna start paying interest and borrow a million dollars when we don't need it. You know, I'd rather borrow just what we need. Next month, we need some more, we go and get some more. But again, it, it's up to the court.
Your, but my point is here, why, Mr. Carter, you said that, uh, can you explain to us why there were no purchase orders in this, to be paid in this report?
Well, exactly, it's very simple.
Okay, well, hold on. We don't have the money, you're trying to say we don't have the money in the road and bridge, right? At this point in time? Okay, do we have money in the general fund?
There is some money in the...
How much is it?
Well, we just saw the treasurer's report.
Oh, yeah, but I, I couldn't really understand it, to be honest with you. I, I wasn't bringing it. Well, how much money do we have on, on the general fund?
Barely enough for the general fund.
No, I don't know what a barely, how much do we have?
I'll get that number for you right away. Did he have it in the report?
Because, you know, Mr. Carter, this is what, what we've been trying to, to prevent, is not paying our bills. It's very embarrassing to go out there to a McAllen and go order a part, and they say, well, you ain't got no credit because you haven't paid. And like I've told the judge, and I said, look, Judge, we got money in the general fund, we need to move them. I mean, to get these people paid on time, you know, these people work on a daily basis too. And if not, and if we don't have any money, we got monies in the, we got a line of credit in the bank that we can go borrow money. What do you mean, no?
I think there is no line of credit right now.
But don't, don't we have monies available in the bank?
They're available. They're available.
You can go and borrow.
Huh?
You can go and borrow.
Well, then, but we already got a, I think, a million dollars, ain't it?
It's a million dollars. We, we've been approved for a million dollars.
But, but on your respect, you don't have any money in your line of credit. The line of credit expired in December, and we didn't pay them till February.
We have the money in the bank, Commissioner, I, I promise you that.
Okay, well, all we need to do is, because it is not right, not to pay these people back. We, we are probably here vendors, make sure they're in good standing. We're the ones that are not in good standing. I mean, the county is not paying up to their, uh, to their obligations. And it's embarrassing for us, you know, that you go out there and you can't get credit because the county doesn't pay. When we don't have to go through that, because we got general, monies in general fund, we can move. Because, I mean, there's people that, most of those monies in general funds are for salaries, ain't it? People are wor, are working out there.
It's to make, to, to make ends meet. Now, see, the thing is, Mr. Carter, and this is what's frustrating for me. When we talked, I said, okay, if there's money that we're gonna be short, go and get it from the accounts at the bridge, maybe Miss Salinas has some, you know, and come up with whatever we have. And then, if needed, then we'll go to the bank. Apparently, this wasn't done. You know, I also told you, and again, I cannot give you orders. You work directly for the district, uh, judges. And, and this whole issue is, in my opinion, on account of them. You know, by terminating that lady when they did. But anyhow, see, now we're the ones under the gun. You know, I, I also told you, or asked you, you know, if monies were needed, let me know. Move whatever monies are available. Let the agencies know that we're gonna, we're not gonna meet the deadline, see if we can extend it. Have that been, has that been done?
I have, uh, I have an answer for that, yes, sir. On the, on the matter of sending letters to the agencies with active grants, um, that is still pending. I, I'll be discussing this matter with the board of judges to, in a meeting tomorrow for guidance, for their guidance on that item.
Mr. Carter, this is the last week of the month. The, the audits are due Friday, and we haven't even notified the agencies?
Yes, I have, I have notified them verbally.
Verbally, but see, verbal, you know, words will go with the wind.
I can, I'll tell you that their verbal, their verbal response was that there will be no extension allowed. I can send the letter, but I...
There's no, there will be no extension allowed by the agencies.
You know, and, and again, I said, if, if, if they decline, let me know so that I can pull some strings from our senators and, and our legislators, just have them go to bat for us with the agencies to see if we can at least salvage some of them. I've never been told. See, this is what's frustrating for me, you know. I, I ask you for, for things, I get nothing. I don't know if someone is telling you, don't give the judge a damn thing.
No, this just happened.
But it's hurting the county.
This just happened late Friday afternoon.
And I'm sorry if I'm getting riled up here, but this is live and die for us, for the court.
It's gonna get rough working without the agents' money. It's gonna get rougher not even working with the money that we have, the general fund. You're just gonna be here for a while off and on. Whose, whose responsibility is to move money from the general fund to the general?
I would go to the auditor.
I'm not.
What responsibility is it?
I'm, I'm not in the business. I'm, I'm not authorized to move money from one fund to another. I'm not allowed to do that, and I would not do that.
What was it, Charlie?
Another, after, after fifteen years long, I'm gonna say to us, whose responsibility is it?
Well, you're, you're, you're the court, I'm not.
So, actually, the court can just go, would we need to pass an order, or, or do, what do we need to do to transfer the money?
If you wanna do a budget amendment, there's a process for doing a budget amendment. Whatever you wanna do, but I'm not gonna collect.
Well, really, she would come to me and say, let, let me rephrase that. The treasurer would come and report, we don't have any money, we don't have any money. I'd go to her, and I would, Ms. Carter, do we have money for payroll? She'd say, yeah, we got money for payroll. I don't know what she would do, but they would come up with money. Maybe Sam does, I don't know. You know, this happened, the same thing last year, about three or four months prior, and we always had money to make ends meet. What was done? I don't know. Again, maybe Sam can shed some light. But she always found a way to come up with the funds, maybe getting from the different departments or enterprise funds, or, I don't know. And, and this is what I had asked.
We need, we need to find out, because if it takes court action, call an emergency meeting, and we'll, we'll get somebody from the general fund to, to fulfill our obligation, let your fund worry about them.
Well, if, if I had known this...
Is there gonna be someone that's actually whose responsibility is it?
I'll check it out.
You or him?
I'll, I'll check it out.
Or her?
Mr. Pena, you cannot participate in this thing. It's only us, because we're talking with the auditor.
Do you have a question that you don't have the answer to, and I'd be...
I will find out. I will find out the answer, 'cause a lot of things that you print are erroneous. For example, the unemployment, you, you just reported. It's, and, and Rose Manavie is correct. We're two percent better than what you reported. But anyhow, I will find out that answer as to who, who is responsible for that.
Please, please repeat.
Who is responsible for transferring money? I, I'll find out by this afternoon.
Okay, please do. I'd like to know. Okay, please do, I'd like to know.
Well, we need to get it done. I mean, that's what we need to get it done, so we can take care of this bill.
Okay, find the legal backing for, background for doing that. I don't sign, I don't, I sign checks ordered by the county administration. I don't, I don't make checks just because I think it needs to be done.
No, we understand, but as I said, we, that's what, you know...
And if we need a court order, we'll pass a court order saying, you know, this needs to happen. Because Mr. Guss is correct, you know, we cannot have our, especially our local vendors that live day-to-day, having to wait two months to get paid, when there's no need for that.
And I guess the main issue here is that if we have to provide, to stop providing basic services, we need to know. The fact that, there's nothing, we just stop. Let everybody go home and park everything, and that's it.
Commissioner, that's not, that's not the solution. We need to continue, as a commissioner, we need to start serving, still continue serving our community out there, they need all the people, you know, in case of a hurricane, whatever it is, you know. What we need to do, we need to lay off everybody in the offices that, you know, wait until money comes in, then bring it back. We need to continue to operate up there.
Yeah. I guess we get...
Well, I will, I will find out that answer for you, Commissioner.
And if we need to, we need to straighten out, borrow the money, we have to do, and next year, if we have to cut the budget, we'll cut the budget, but straight across from general fund and every office.
I agree, I agree.
The people that we got, a lot of that wait that we need to get rid of.
Well, I think I should take the opportunity at this point to explain the results of prior accounting policies and financial management of the county. On the Road and Bridge Fund, as of last Friday, the cash balance in the Road and Bridge Fund was twelve thousand dollars. The Road and Bridge Fund also has a due from the payroll account, payroll clearing account of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, making the current cash available of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The Road and Bridge Fund began the year with a deficit balance of one million and three thousand dollars. And then we're going to add, we need to add to that the projected budget deficit for this year of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So the total funds that the Road and Bridge Fund needs is one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So subtract the two hundred and fifty-nine thousand that is available, and the total cash needed is one million and thirteen thousand dollars. So if you're planning to...
Are we expecting any other revenues? We're not over with the year. We're expecting any revenue coming in for the Road and Bridge?
The projected revenue is included in the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand that's in...
That's all we're lacking to collect, the projected revenue that we weren't expecting.
Yes, yes. So if you're, if you're planning to...
Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
If you want to balance the fund to zero at year-end, you'd need a million and thirteen thousand dollars, roughly.
We're not going to balance it to zero. I explained at the beginning, you know, we're short the amusement machines, and we're short Dukes. So there's no way we're going to balance zero.
I'm just explaining the consequences of the policies that have been carried out in the past, so that's the answer.
And Road and Bridge is always running in the red because of the formulas that we talked about earlier. But unless you and I get together and we'll go over some of those numbers and see, explain to me where we're at. But as far as getting Road and Bridge paid, we need to get that done, you know. You just need to talk to me and let me know how much we need, and we'll get you the money.
I hope that the line of communication between you, the judge, really exists, because you're the architect, he's the budget officer. If the line of communication breaks, this can't go down. There's no doubt about it. And this is good.
The will is, the will is there, I assure you. It's a work in progress, okay? Yes, there's, it needs to be improved, and it will be improved.
But we, like I said, we need to find a solution, and we need to try to balance it this year, you know, like I said. If we're short a million dollars, we need to go borrow it, and next year's budget, just cut everything off. I mean, from one end to the other of the, of the, of the general fund and Road and Bridge. And I guarantee you, it doesn't take very much from each office and the commissioners' court to get it off. Matter of fact, we can do it off the general fund all of it.
You're the court, I'm, I'm just the bean counter.
That's my, my thing, you know, I don't know about the judge, but like I said, I think we need to continue our services, but I think we can cut off the million dollars easy on the, on the general.
Maybe we can even shut down some offices that need it.
General fund, right, yeah.
Well...
Not simply, Judge, I mean, let's get, go, get whatever we need in next year's budget, just chop it off, general fund, and we'll be all right.
Just for your information, Judge, I took work home over the weekend. I finished this report at midnight last night. So it was not available before the meeting today. I apologize for that. In a perfect world, it would have been available several days ago. Understand the stress and the pressure that the auditor's office is under right now, working as hard as we possibly can to finalize our trial balance and get that, get them ready for the auditors to start their work, communicating with the, with the grant system to get down on my knees and beg for an extension of time. So I have several irons in the fire, and that's all I've been doing lately. So this report, I'll be glad to, can I leave a copy with you?
Yeah, please, yeah, I'd like to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I hope you get all the high caliber.
I moved, we approved the entry.
I think of the motion.
Moved in second for item five, discussion. Honorable, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is a refund of twenty-five dollars. To la treinta y nueve, meat market. Again, this is one of those that got caught in the squeeze between Rio Grande City starting their food inspection. We had done the preliminary, so...
Does it come from general fund or from the...
From precinct one?
Precinct one.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Second, discussion. Honorable, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is an action item, and this is on tax resale bids by Lime Burger, Graham. Are they here? I guess we'll tape that one down. Is there a motion to table? Eight and nine, really?
I'm moving to table eight and nine.
Second, your honor.
Moved in second. Honorable, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten is an action item, and this is amendment number two to the cooperative agreement between the Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board and Starr County.
This is a meeting that we have had with Lori and the entity pertaining to the extension to, to see if we can file any claims pertaining to heat or construction due to the wrong seeding and mulching that they, they had done for the old Mito's Garcia site seven.
Okay, so you're recommending that we approve this amendment?
Yes, and it's for the extension.
Oh, for the extension.
That is correct.
I have a motion.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I guess, is also amendment number four. Is this the same thing?
It is correct, sir. One's state money and the other one is federal money.
I have a motion.
Moved in second. Honorable, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve is an action item, and this is the fifty-three-ten program, preventive maintenance. Money.
That is correct, sir. Item number twelve, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, these are policies that we had to revise due to...
I have a question on that. It happened this morning. Why do I have to go change the oil in a van because it belongs to the fifty-three-ten program? I have to go change it somewhere if I get a receipt, when I can do it there, at the shop? Why?
Because they...
Can I be counted as in kind for...
You can, Commissioner, but we do have monies for this. That's why we go through fifty-three-ten. Well, once they give us, once you give us the invoice, we will reimburse you.
It doesn't make any sense, go pay seventy-some dollars, eighty-some dollars for oil change, or I can do it over here for fifteen, sixteen dollars.
And these are policies that we have with the text notes.
I don't care, but policy, policy can be changed, no?
Well, when they advise us then, but these are policies that we have to go in order to avoid the grants.
But let's assume that they changed the oil there. Can they submit a statement saying...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and you will get reimbursed through text notes.
I was debating that with my former and my secretary, and they said, we couldn't. I said, what do you mean? The policy can be changed, you can't?